Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, July seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, five forty-five P. M., and we will now begin the Compton City Council meeting. If you could all please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita. McCoy.
Here.
Sharie.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. And I'd like to just mention briefly, we have our very own Judge Fowler here with us and the audience on tonight for our special guest, although all of you are special. And we will proceed forward with public comments. Ms. Carolyn Bell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Brown, city council members. I'm Evangelist Carolyn Bell, and I'm here to speak and address the concern of cancellation of our millinery class at the Dollar High Community Center. On notification was July eleventh. And it's a very distressing situation. And I've been a student in this millinery class at Dollar High for about two years. And during that time, I've learned and acquired a lot of skills. And during that timeframe, I have invested in a lot of millinery equipment and materials and a brand-new Singer sewing machine. Now, I've acquired these skills from our millinery instructor, Ms. Joanne Pierisol. And she has shared with us that millinery art is a dying art, unfortunately, in our culture. And there have been, I would say, at least a dozen or more people who have participated in the class so that they can acquire the skills and continue. And bless those that wish to have the millinery products. Now, I've been in the class, and my desire was to start an online business. An online business selling various types of hats, Tams, fascinators. And if anyone had an opportunity to view the latest wedding, the fascinators are really big and very popular. And I've made several that have sold just from me wearing one, and they want to buy one. So I haven't been able to make them quickly enough to supply the need, so that there is a need for the millinery design class. So I'm just asking for consideration from the council to investigate, to see that the renewal of the contract can be done because it impacts our culture and our community. And if not, to provide a reason why the millinery class has been canceled. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. I don't know if there are other, I see other members of the millinery class here, and I did learn of this issue today. And I inquired with city management, and I know that they plan to continue the millinery class, that there's a current personnel issue that will be resolved. And so the class will resume, and I will try to, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if you're able to provide a timeline as to when we plan on resuming the class?
I'm working with the Parks and Rec Director on that as we speak, so in the next week or two, we'll have an answer for you guys.
Okay, thank you. We will try to provide an update before the council's last dark period, before we go into August, which we don't have council meetings. So we'll try to resolve that by at least next week to give an estimated time that you'll have that information. Thank you.
And in that same report, Mayor, can, will it be with the same instructor? Or are we changing instructors, and if so, with an explanation of why?
Absolutely. Mr. City Manager, you've heard the council ladies' request.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll say what we can publicly.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker of the evening is Bishop Gilery.
Bishop Bell J. Gilery, I rise today, now to the council and the mayor. I don't know if anybody's been reading the L.A. Times, but it seems that our great city of Compton has gotten itself in the newspaper once again for, you know, gangs inside of our sheriff's department. And, you know, I came here several years ago, a couple of years ago, and I told you that I had a problem personally and professionally with Mr. Thatcher. Now, Mr. Thatcher is very good with taking pictures, and he's been very political in our city, but we have seen our city regress. Our crime level has went up, and it's like everybody's taking a blind ear, a blind eye, and acting as if they don't know what's going on in Compton. Well, let me tell you what's going on in Compton. First of all, we have a fifty-million-dollar lawsuit against us for a man being shot in the back five times in a canal. When Mr. Thatcher was on the news, he was saying, "Well, he had a gun." Then when this council and others, we started asking questions. The councilwoman Zarita went down there, met with the people, a hundred people going down protesting, and they wanted to know, "Where's the gun?" There was no gun. So in a civil disposition, deposition, this cop, our deputy sheriff from here in Compton, had a tattoo on his leg. And the tattoo apparently reminds us of what we found over in Linwood when I was deputy mayor, is Vikings. Okay? Now, I do know that there are some cliques that are not gang-related, but if this had happened in any other city at any other time, you're the captain, you get fired. This is a situation where they're trying to look at Jim McDonough as if he is the, you know, he's asking for investigation, but he's not doing it. What's going over in Compton? What's going on in Compton? What's going on in Compton? What's going on in Compton is that you have a union, the same union that supported a candidate that didn't live in our city to run against our city attorney. The deputies have their own union. I, I also want to reflect that this sheriff tried to get eleven misconducts to be presented before a judge and D. A., before calling a deputy to testify. One of those things is misconduct, bribes, misappropriation of property, tampering with evidence, false statements, you know, false information on the record, discriminatory harassment, forcible, unreasonable force, and family violence. Well, the union fought the sheriff and told him, "No, you can't do this." So what I'm saying is that if we have an issue of gang-banging inside of our sheriff's department, and if we got murders and people are suing the city, something's wrong. But usually, there is an investigation, Madam Mayor, and you look at and you say, "Okay, under these captains, we didn't have that problem. Under this captain, we have this problem." So all I'm asking this council to do is the same thing that you do to our city manager or to any other director, is you do a performance evaluation.
Thank you, Bishop Gilery.
Thank you.
Mr. Holyfield.
To the mayor of City Councils, ladies and gentlemen. My concern is, actually, my name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I'm the president of the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce. And the businesses on Compton Boulevard, let's say, from Alameda to Central, are very concerned with a few issues. One, the lighting situation. Lights are out, it's very dark, which makes it a safety factor, particularly around Wilmington and Compton Boulevard. And next is the trees, the electric wires in the trees from Dwight to Tahada. The trees, we need to bring in TLC and have the city manager to check this. I realize we're working on Long Beach and a few other places, but this here, there's something, this is a hazard, a real hazard, because that's, we're talking about a number of feet above the lines. The trees, the way the trees are growing, and it's a hazard in that area from Dwight to, let's say, Tahada. And then, then TLC could go back to the rectory, Long Beach and et cetera, et cetera, Long Beach Boulevard, et cetera. But we would like to have the city manager to send his representative or he himself to come out and look from Alameda to Central and address the darkness and the trees, and the trees growing through those lines, and also on Compton and Dwight where that truck hit the tree limb and knocked it down in that up, and one next to it, perhaps the wind will blow it over. Thank you very kindly for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield. Mr. Adolfo Vargas.
Hello. How you guys doing today?
Hello.
Good to see you guys. So you guys know we did our anniversary for, as well as installation of officers. Sadly, you guys didn't tell them, but we had other elected officials from other cities that attended the event. I wanted also to present the city council and the mayor with a plaque from the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Compton for the work that you guys are doing within our community and each specific district, trying to unite and educate and also help our community as much as you can. So I wanted to present this plaque to you guys, especially for the mayor, for their continued support, Emma Sharie, Tonya McCoy, Jane Zarita, and Isaac Galvin. So thank you for your guys' continuous work for the community. As well, we actually have something very exciting going on tomorrow, which we have our first tour that we're introducing for the community and other cities as well, which are W. R. D. Water for Shipman Facility. With them, one of the biggest water supplies throughout Southern California. So we're doing a tour with them tomorrow at twelve-thirty, which will be meeting at their headquarters locations, and we'll be on buses that will be heading out over there, learning their way, how they treat the water, how they collect the water, and as well as they distribute the water to each community and each city throughout our surroundings of Southern California. So I just wanted to know if you know who to give this to, or what?
The city clerk will come and pick up the plaque. Thank you so very much for the recognition. And congratulations to the chamber on the installation of the new officers for this upcoming period.
No, of course. We've been on the newspapers, so it was pretty exciting, sadly, that you guys weren't able to attend, so we can get some type of, you know, feedback from the city, especially that at the end of the day, we represent not just the city of Compton, but the businesses in the community and the minorities and the Latinos, especially what happened to that ninety-two-year-old gentleman, sadly, so close to our city and so close to the city of Compton. And just being in that type of situation, and especially with that type of racism, is not needed within our communities at all. And to stand to be that voice, and especially for the Latino community and the minorities, they definitely need it because we're going through a situation that my grandmother went through, and I would never thought my entire life, where I'll be in this type of situation where I can't even speak Spanish without being criticized, saying I should be deported, or any Latinos regardless of. So if the city clerk can get them, then thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maria Villarreal.
Buenas tardes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Maria Villarreal, C. E. O. Latino Chamber of Commerce in Compton. I just wanted to say something today before I start my comments. It's been a blessing for us, for the Latino Chamber of Commerce, to have this young man be part of it. We have been blessed left and right after he came to our chamber. Yesterday, we had a meeting with a person in Carahay. Yesterday, we had a meeting with a person in Carahay. We're moving forward. We're not only working in the city of Compton with our business, but we're also moving forward with two other cities, which is a blessing. There's going to be a lot of new things that we're doing in the community, as well as outside of our city. You know, sometimes when you can't get, when you can't reach out to the star and touch it, at least you can look and see what's coming. Because when you do that, blessings are pouring towards you. Last Tuesday, I came into the city council meeting with a family of the gentleman who was assaulted on 118 and Central. Sometimes, you know, we get related to people because we're up there doing things, not because we just want to have five minutes of fame. It hurts when I see people going through that. And this case is a very, very, very unique case, because we have abuelo, grandpa, we have a mother, a female, we have a child involved in this incident, which means, I'm saying this to say that all three individuals need some support, need some help. And we have to support them as much with the knowledge that we have instead of helping them and making seem, and in other people's mind, and ideas, you know, like, we trying to divide the city, we trying to divide black and browns. No, it's not. We're trying to help people. As you know, Maria Villarreal does not only involve in defending and providing and protecting businesses in Compton, but she's also involved in the education in our city, as well in our community. So, therefore, you know, I reach out to this family, because I believe, and that elder abuse hurts everybody. So, we need to work together, and we need to help all three individuals, not just one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. Mr. David Irons?
David Irons.
Not so soon.
Can you start the clock over? Yeah, I got four minutes, that's cool. David Irons, United States citizen. See, I don't have a home no more, so I'm a United States citizen. I used to be a resident of Compton because I lost my home. Anyway, let me see what I'm talking about. Anti-gentrification, anti-res zoning. Gentrification have made people homeless. So, I got to do stuff real quick for two minutes. Now, the bowling alley was built after Ms. Zerito. The bowling alley was built when I was born, so it is not 75 years old, you said that. And during the Anchorage earthquake, I always studied architecture. The only building that was standing there was a prefab building in Anchorage, and I was in elementary school. So, the buildings that, like, the warehouses on Arteja and the new brickyard, they don't fall down because of the way things are. So, I would like you to give us, artists, that building. I don't think nothing wrong with it. And then, the penny tax, that was very misleading. It was a percentage. So, people voted for the penny. I don't even know why anybody from the council wouldn't even say, "Hey, it's not a penny, it's a percentage." I got two daughters that's, I almost said alcoholics. They are accountants. I got two daughters, they don't even drink. I got two daughters that are accountants. But the thing about it is this. You misleading people when you tell stuff like that. Like, the college, that college was very misleading. And every time you put a bond on something, the people in Compton have to pay that tax. But the people of Rosewood and all them other cities around us don't even get taxed. That is so sad that people vote for stuff like that, vote for tax. You probably don't even know about the usury tax. I don't know if you know, but you kind of old Mr. Rambo. Hey, 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 Mr. Rambo, thank you for, thank you for, I mean, for real. Thank you for showing up October the 14th. I cannot, I cannot say much more because I ain't got enough time. But, next week.
Thank you, Mr. Irons. Ms. Joanne Evans?
Good evening, I'm Joanne Evans, a millinery teacher. I was glad to hear that you're going to look into the matter. And while I'm standing here, I would like to thank some of the millinery students for coming out and support. But I rose to also say, since you're going to look into it, I don't have to go into it. But it would be so wonderful if our students here in Compton, I believe some of them are out in, I don't know, May, June, July, if they could come in, I notice they have programs where they pay the students to be in the parks and stuff. If they can come in and learn millinery, that's a dying art. And if the kids could come in and learn how to make a hat from a block, maybe they can open up a boutique or something, or make fascinators. And I think it'd be so good if we can get our children involved in hat-making, because we're not going to be here forever. And I would just like to see it go on and on and on. And I'm just saying, consider having some kids for, like, June, July, meet with me, wherever, if it's not, we meet with somebody, you know? And I want to just say, it's five different senior citizen buildings around here. Nobody have millinery, and everybody seem to be seeking me out because they don't have it. So, it is a dying art, and we don't want it to go away. And thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Joanne. Ms. Kyron Campanos? Okay, thank you. Ms. Kathy Turner Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm here because I'm the vice president of our homeowners association, which is on Panas and Rosecrans. And we've been having problems with RVs parked on Panas, boats parked on Panas, people dumping stuff on Panas, vans parked there at the safe spot so that the food truck could set up in the car wash lot, which brings a lot of traffic. My concern is, the construction that's in front of our homes, the trucks are making U-turns up in our drive area. And I also would like to know, what time does construction start? Because before it was seven o'clock, now they're starting at six. And one of my concerns with the RVs and the boats parked there, when we come out of our gate, when school starts, you have all that extra traffic, and you have the kids walking. So, you're easing out to see. There's no stop signs whatsoever. And I'm afraid there's going to be a bad accident there. I'm afraid that something might happen to the kids with those RVs parked along there. And we have a problem with them coming into our gated community using our showers in our pools. Our security runs them out. We find them in the jacuzzi, drinking tequila, smoking. Our security have to run them out. So, I want to know what can be done about that area right there. It's really bad, and we have pictures of everything. I've sent pictures to Mr. Rambo, directly to his email, and I've sent pictures through the website also. But that is my concern. And I was hoping Galvin would be here so he could hear our concerns, but the last time he came to one of our board meetings, he didn't even know we were in his district. So, I mean, I don't know what to say about that. But that's all I have to say. But I hope that can get addressed soon, especially with the construction and those heavy trucks. In fact, the other morning at four o'clock, there was a dump truck up in our community. I don't know if he made the wrong turn, but I don't even know how he got in the gate. But he was up in our complex at four o'clock in the morning.
Thank you for bringing these concerns to our attention. I see the captain heading to the lobby. I want to request that he speak with you directly regarding the RV parking and the trespassing on your private property. Regarding the construction, I remember I attended one of the meetings there, and the construction hours were specifically seven. It's very rare that there's a provision made to start before 7:00 a.m., so I'm going to ask for the city manager to confirm that.
And also, the water trucks, aren't they supposed to be doing something about all that dust and dirt? They're not doing that.
I think I see, I saw our planning manager in the back. I'm going to ask that he meet you, Mr. City Manager, if he can call your personnel to confirm the time for the construction? Because if so, we need to ensure that we're monitoring the construction activity.
Right. It's, the project manager should contact our planning department in terms of, and also building inspection, in terms of the dust mitigation, the noise, as well as the truck traffic and the hauling. There was also a complaint about some trash that was inside the facility. And last week, I sent an alert to the sheriff's department about the RV and the boat, and also to our public works department about the trash.
They didn't even get that back again.
So, okay, so they, they...
I have one other question. There's two white RVs that park right there at the corner as soon as you turn, every day. They save a spot and move over into the car wash for a food truck in the evening. What can be done about that?
We can talk to them with code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question, I was just curious.
Myself, you said who, you said they are in the swimming pool in the jacuzzi. Are you speaking of the homeless people? So, do you guys have to, is it a combination to come in your gate?
No, sometimes there's a gate, a walk-in gate, and somebody puts a rock there where you can just walk in. And we can't check it all, you know, all night long, a walk-in access gate.
Yeah, and you know, just while she's talking about that, I'm going to ask that somebody goes over to the car wash there, and they need to do some grooming over there. Their weeds are growing all out of the fence and everywhere on the sidewalk, so I think that needs to be addressed, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief is in the back, he has code enforcement right now, so he's taking notes.
Great. Ms. Sharon Daniels?
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
This is actually my first time coming here and speaking in front of the council. I am a homeowner. I live in the same community as Kathy Turner. I've been there for eight years. When I first moved to Compton, it was very nice over there within that area. Within the last eight years, it has declined. I'm here today because I'm set on the conditions that have affected my livelihood in the city of Compton. And again, I've seen a tremendous decline within the surrounding area, within the District, within District Two in particular. I have a list of concerns that I would like to bring to your attention. Some I'm sure you have already heard. Kathy just spoke on some of them, but I would like to speak on the ones that I have. I was here last week. I spoke to Mr. Rambo about, you know, some of the conditions, and I also presented to him some of the pictures that I just handed over to the shelf. So, if you can take a look at them. Those were taken yesterday and some last week. One of my concerns is the large amount of street vendors that are just up and down every corner on Rosecrans. They are operating all night long until about four in the morning. My house, my bedroom window is right on Panas, so I get all the noise, the music in the morning. It's heavy traffic, it's loud, and it's affecting my sleep. Compton has plenty of vacant commercial buildings, and I think we should look at educating, you know, people who are setting up street vendors and, you know, help them to, like, lease out space, which will make a contribution to the city of Compton, to bring funding into the city, you know? Because I'm paying over $5,400 a year in property taxes, and I don't think people should be setting up shop and having tax-free money coming in and not making any contribution to the city. So, I would like the city council to work on that, educating them, get them to invest in the city as well. The other concern is the high property taxes. It's just ridiculous. It's just, it's just, it's affecting my monthly payment. I'm rarely trying to keep up, and I just want to know, where are the funds going? The potholes, all the trash, as you can see on the photos. I'm just asking that if we can just clean up the city within the surrounding area. I have to go to Long Beach, Carson, Lakewood, Zerito's to do my shopping, and I would just like for, you know, our city to, you know, there should be an example on how Compton should be operated and how we should look.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
Thank you.
And we will address a few of your concerns under the city manager's reports. I want to ask Cecil that you be prepared for that. And I'll wait for that time. We only have two or a few more members of the public for public comments, and then we'll go directly there.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Linda Harkis? Ms. Linda, I can't read the last name, it starts with an H. Diana Medel?
Hi, good evening, Council. Diana, with Assemblymember Mike Gibson's office. I just wanted to give the council a really quick update on AB 1577, and just a quick reminder to everyone what that is. AB 1577 is the bill that the assembly member put through the assembly to require Sativa to accept an administrator to take full control of the agency after the multiple complaints that we received on our office and the multiple speakers that had attended the council meeting. And so, just a quick update, the bill is still moving forward. It's currently in appropriations committee. We are currently working with the county. The county will be providing the admin. So, the state will provide the funding, and then we'll work directly with the county to get that administrator in there. We're also working hand-in-hand with LAFCO. LAFCO, if you are not aware, they have decided to start to dissolve Sativa. As this process is happening, we will also be working hand-in-hand with them to get that administrator to Sativa as soon as possible. And so, we just ask for your support. If you have the time, a letter, a call to the governor's desk would really be helpful to ensure that we get this bill passed and we get the funding to get the state administrator. I also have an invitation for all the leaders and the leadership of the city of Compton. And on behalf of the assembly member, we want to invite all the leaders to join the governor's office, as well as the city of Long Beach, to a regional convening, regional event, to build capacity to ensure we completely count everyone for the 2020 census. As we all know, we have received multiple threats from the current administration that they are going to take our funding if we are not fully counted. So, this meeting is just going to be to gather all of the leaders and answer any questions that anyone may have. There was a big, big question that the communities had about the citizenship question that they were going to put on the census. So, all of those questions will be discussed with all the... So all of those questions will be discussed with all the community leaders. So we want to ensure that Compton is counted. If there's any leadership that would like to attend, the meeting will be on August 2nd from 9:30 to 1:00 p.m. and it will be at the Long Beach Convention Center. There is free parking and translation is also available. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce Kelly.
Good evening. I am Joyce Kelly and I came to Compton 52 years ago. And I might ask people who are coming here to divide this city to please leave. We don't need any more problems and situations. As far as the issue with the 92-year-old man, I sit there and watch the people try to practically carry this man up the steps and he should have been at home in bed just because they wanted a little publicity. And that's all these two people cared about. Those are the ones who are causing havoc in the city and call, calling different council people racist, which they don't know. They're upset with themselves and they take it out on others under a fake Chamber of Commerce. I want you people, when you get ready to look at number seven, it's for a lobbyist, a state lobbyist, for $180,000. How many potholes can that fill? What has that lobbyist done for, excuse me, for the city of Compton? That's $15,000 a month. What have you received all these years? First it was $8,000 a month, then $9,000, now it's $15,000 a month. And I think that's ridiculous. Now you said you wanted to stop the contracts, having contracts in the city, but yet you continue to give contracts. And I don't know about this grants program consulting. Why don't you just send the people to classes instead of paying all the money out? The classes would be cheaper than consultants. As far as a millinery class. Now you remember when I brought the issue about the senior over a dollar high being abused? Now, that situation only carried three months with it, a three-month probation. Things haven't changed that much. Now why would you have someone abusing seniors around seniors? I say, okay, you could have a millinery class, but check out the person. And for someone to come up here to talk about the sheriff department, well, if I were an ex-con, maybe I'd have an issue with it also. And that same person came here, was paid to come here and slander me. So who are you going to believe? If you have an issue, you want to discuss what's going on with the sheriff department, go and discuss it. I did. And he, I'm, I'm sure he's probably afraid to go and discuss it. But please, consider the people's money. Over in Bellflower, there's a couple of cracks in the street. They got signs posted that they're going to slurry the streets on Friday. I mean, do something for us, Compton.
Thank you. Ms. Vanya Wilson? Oh, Ms. Jackson? Would you like to come up?
Yes.
Okay.
I can get you any time. I couldn't find a parking space.
Oh, no problem. We're still working on that issue.
You still working on the parking issue?
Yes.
Okay. Janice Jackson, property owner in the city of Compton. This city is pretty dirty, but in all honesty, it's kind of on us, the people in the community. Because I watch people get out of their cars and they just throw trash. You know, they dump it right out of their cars. They drive down the street, they toss things out of the window. And I was just wondering if maybe the city could look into maybe doing some type of a "Don't litter" campaign. I remember they had something like that probably back in the 70s or 80s or something. You know, maybe to try to get something going, to get people to take pride in their community. I mean, I, I, some of it may be, you know, illegal dumping coming from other areas, but for the most part, I witnessed a lot of it being dumped by people that are in this city. And, you know, I just want to share something with you guys because I want you to understand where I'm really coming from. My mother is 93 years old and I actually own property in Signal Hill. But I live in Compton through the week because I promised my mother that she can die in her own home. So I stay with her through the week and I go home to my place on the weekend. And, and I live in Signal Hill and Signal Hill is a small city as well. And Compton is a small city and, and if Signal Hill can do it, Compton can too. But it takes good governing and management and citizens. I mean, we can continue to blame, but you, you gotta, you know, take some responsibility yourself. And I just really think, you know, you need to try to get something going to try to get people to, to care about their city. It, it, it's our city, you know? I'm, I'm from Compton and there's a lot of good people here, but there's people that are stuck here. I'm not stuck here. I stay here because my 93-year-old mother wants to stay here because she's comfortable here. But there are other people that they're stuck here and they have to stay here and they're suffering. And they come here, you know, some come here to complain, but for the most part, some people are just kind of giving up. And you drive through the city and you can see that. People are letting their houses deteriorate and they're just putting up with all kinds of stuff that they don't have to put up with. And so I just really hope the city will kind of, you know, do something to try to encourage people to have pride in their city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to the Sheriff's Department, thank you for your service as well as the Fire Department. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn Boone, would you like to speak? Come on up.
Lynn Boone, city of Compton. First thing I want to say is, I was looking over the minutes and I haven't seen the sheriff's contract come across this deal for 2018, 2019. But I was watching the Board of Supervisors meeting and I heard the sheriff talk about the contract for the city of Compton. This was several, about a month ago or so. And I know the last contract that I read when Ms. Brown came in was only 12 pages long, where the city of Compton had no say-so on the sheriff. And, you know, really, the city of Compton has no say-so on anything. And I went into the sheriff's station. Do you know that there's only eight seats in that office? Eight cheers. And they're the same cheers that were there with the Compton police. You guys ought to walk in there. It'll make you cry and you have the audacity to have your pictures up on the wall. You really do. It's pitiful that we have men and women, the sheriff, working in that kind of facility. But yet and still, you guys can create a $6.4 million deficit. It's, it's just unbelievable. Compton is filthy. It's filthy all over, not just in the second district, but throughout this city. And people of Compton, we started out with 10.5 miles. I don't know how big Compton is now. Because they're constantly selling off and giving off property. And the thing about it, at first it was just Ms. Brown, but now you up here, you're voting and giving it away. And we have so many nonprofits here in the city, you can't even count them. And I know one nonprofit's don't come up here behind me and say that I don't have proof or all of this stuff. But that's not true. And I want to thank the people that called me and emailed me and texted me and, and know the difference. But anyway, and I do have a question. I want to know, when did it become, you know, status quo that our city manager travels with the city council members? Because that has never happened before. But I notice now that when you guys go places, this city manager is there. There's something wrong with that and the people of Compton don't need to be paying for that. He needs to be here on 24, 24 hours, seven days a week, especially as bad as this city looks. You know, it's just, the city is just so lawless, it's, it's unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Direct consent agenda.
Consent items are routine and expected to be controversial. They'll, non-controversial, excuse me, they'll be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
Sommo. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselperson Sarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Cherie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. I'm going to ask that we actually go to city manager's report and just to have the city manager give a verbal response to some of the constituent matters that were discussed on this evening.
Very briefly, Mayor and Council on the Pan S issue near the Montage Housing as well as the KB Homes construction. Last week I spoke to one of the constituents and shared the photographs with one of the deputies here in the council chamber. And also I talked to, I spoke to Public Works and Code Enforcement and Parking Enforcement about that. We did Parking Enforcement operation this past weekend and wrote a number of citations. And we will follow up with the construction, the KB Construction folks because I was concerned also about the number of, what time they started, how much dust was being generated, the noise they were generating. So those things are already in place and then I will follow up with staff tomorrow and then also go by the area and personally take a look at the, the particular construction site. We have a pothole contract signed and we plan to do some pothole filling in that particular area very soon.
Thank you. And I just wanted to address, there was a concern about the recent increase in property taxes and there's usually a misconception that those funds are going to the city of Compton, but they're actually funds that were approved via a bond measure for the school district. And so those funds are going directly to the school district. They do not come to the city and unfortunately, those funds are not used to improve basic city services, but they're used for school district projects for their bond. And so I did want to address that because as a property owner here as well, I've noticed, you know, my property taxes going up significantly in the last year or so. And so those funds are as a result of some of the recent school bonds that have been approved by voters. And regarding the cleanliness of the city, I'm just going to request that city management come forward with just a report of the last efforts that we've had. I know that our office and many council members' offices have worked with the city on an initiative to really focus on addressing the illegal dumping, also getting the community more involved and also focusing targeted code enforcement efforts on certain areas. And so a big part of this retool was getting additional resources to the respective city departments so that we can actually beef up enforcement for code enforcement, really focus on those quality of life issues that affect our residents in our neighborhoods and then also restoring basic city services that ultimately impact the cleanliness of our cities such as tree trimming, graffiti abatement, which we've renewed our contracts and resumed these services. So there is an extensive effort that we've worked on for the past year. And one, the largest component is really getting the churches, the community organizations and also the schools involved in this, in this whole community effort because it is a community issue, requires a community response. And so I am pleased to report that we do have a few school board members that have agreed to be a part of this community initiative and so we'll be happy to make that report at the next council meeting. So I did want to share that information as well. Madam City Clerk?
We're at city attorney's reports.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We have been proposed a few closed session discussions for this evening. Conference, the first two is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Davis versus city of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC 648983 and Ramsey versus city of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC 641681. Those items are pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9A. And we also have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one potential case for discussion pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9B.
Sommo.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselperson Sarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Cherie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're now at unfinished business. And item number three is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Compton amending section 18-2.9 of chapter 18 of the Compton Municipal Code to clarify city parks' hours of operation. On the way? Sommo.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Sarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Cherie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The item?
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. City Attorney, I'm just going to ask that you provide a brief summary for the members of the public that were not present at the first reading of this ordinance.
Yes, this ordinance came about when the Parks Director came to the podium and discussed that employees were leaving the parks around 8:00 p.m. but were unable to secure the facilities. And this lowers the hours of operation to 8:00 p.m., so that can be consistent with staff leaving. There are exceptions for an authorized event or a city-sponsored event. It would stay open longer, but now when staff leaves, they can secure the facilities when they leave.
I just had one comment, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, maybe a year or two ago, I don't know how long, don't hold me to the timeframe, but when staff would come out of the parks at 8:00 o'clock, we would have a, I think a code enforcement car would go over and, and make sure they were out, or sat in the parking lot while they came out of the parks. Do we still do that?
We have one security officer that works in the evening hours. I'm not sure that he can spread himself thin enough to go to every park at 8:00 that closes, particularly in the wintertime when the, when it gets dark at 5:00 o'clock. We can look into that this winter when it gets dark sooner.
So the answer is no?
No, we don't have enough staff to do that, not for every park.
Okay, well, we need to, we need to get ready for that, for when the parks close, when the wintertime, when it's pitch dark at 8:00 and the staff. And then we had even implemented something where when the staff would go in or, or when they would get ready to leave out, they would call the sheriff's station just for some security or, you know, checking balance. So we need to think about getting back to that.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're now at new business, business. Item number four is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Compton, levying a municipal tax rate for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion? Um, I understand this item is being brought forward by the city controller, but I'm going to ask the city manager if you can just give a brief summary and if need be, um, call up the city controller.
Mayor and Council, this item is brought to you, um, as a statutory requirement. L.A. County Auditor Controller collects, um, our taxes for us and they require the, that the municipal tax rate ordinance be passed each year by the city, even though the municipal tax rate remains unchanged this year. Uh, the agenda item is, uh, required to comply with those county requirements.
Thank you very much. Just to confirm for the members of the public, we are not, um, increasing taxes. This is a statutory, um, approval. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're now at item number five. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, amending the two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal year budget to transfer funds and authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order to S H I International Corporation for the purchase of Microsoft licenses, two hundred seventy-four thousand ninety-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Sommo.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, there, there was a budget that was just approved by the council three weeks ago. This wasn't anticipated?
Yes.
Mister City Manager?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this item is brought to you so that we can pay for the licenses for the software. So we have four hundred users in each app.
I can't, I can't really hear you.
This is to pay for the license, uh, software licensing, so we can actually use the computers. So every user, um, every license we have has to be paid for.
No, I understand what it is, but my question is, why are we doing a budget amendment? Why wasn't it factored in the budget you guys approved three weeks ago?
So this particular item, I, I can call the controller up to clarify that particular issue, but we did factor in the budget. So, um, Ms. King, if you can come up and explain why we're doing the budget amendment?
It's coming out of last year's budget.
Yes.
It's what?
It's coming out of last year's budget.
You, you say it's coming out of last year's budget, or this is a last year expense?
It's coming out of last.
It's coming out of last fiscal year's budget.
Fiscal year's budget.
Uh, so there's still money in last year's budget? We're still operating on last year's budget?
I believe it's a carryover, but we need to.
She can carry, Mayor, Councilmembers.
There are a few items that are still on for seventeen eighteen. We're having problems getting, um, all the paperwork together to have it in before June thirty, before the year closes. So there are a couple of them that are coming that are still seventeen eighteen, 'cause they're expenses for the time period.
So the money is still there, or did the money cover, carry over to this new budget?
The money's still there. So we pretty much anticipated that these, um, dollar amounts were coming. So we kind of set the money aside, um, hoping that it would actually get approved. Um, we wouldn't have to put it in the new year's budget.
Say that last part again.
So we set the money aside basically so that we wouldn't have to put it in the new year's budget because we had already, um, anticipated it coming for last year's budget, I mean, last year's expenses.
So, Mister City Attorney, I don't ever remember doing budget amendments for a year that's already over.
No, we typically don't do that. Usually what happens is the things that they actually get approved prior to June thirty, and what we do if they're expenses for the prior year, what happens when the bills and everything come in? We accrue the expenses back to, when we do the accounting and close out the book, we accrue the expenses back to the, um, the fiscal year where they belong to.
Okay, so, you know, not that I'm doubting what you're saying or what the city attorney is saying, I mean, manager is saying, but I just want to be clear on my vote.
Okay.
And to make sure that it's legally okay to amend two thousand, last year's budget, and we've already approved the new budget.
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Legal, so can you make the statement for the record that you're legally fine with that?
I'm legally fine with it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion? And just to confirm, these funds were not carried over to the new budget? Right, I'm just giving a confirmation, thank you. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, rescinding resolution number twenty-four seven sixty-nine, amending the two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal year budget to transfer funds, ratifying and amending the professional service agreement with and reissuing the purchase order for Be Adair Consulting and Administrative Services for Reporting and Administrative Support for Compton's Housing and Urban Development Grants Program, thirty-four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Sommo.
Second.
Discussion? Mister City Manager?
Very, in summary, uh, this service is required for us to manage our, uh, federal grant funds, HUD, our, uh, N S P and home program. It was initiated back when we had staff. As you guys know, that staff has since, uh, turned over, uh, in, uh, before this could be executed properly. So we have to bring this item back for, um, the proper execution of this particular contract. And this is also a requirement, uh, under our federal guidelines.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion?
No, so I guess this is going to be our new practice. This is our new practice. Instead of carrying over the money to pay the bills in the new budget, we'll be amending old budgets.
No, this one, this one is brought back to you because the, uh, initial contract and all this paperwork wasn't completely ex- executed prior to the staff turnover.
Right, but it's still amending the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget.
Yes, you have to amend it to a new, to the accounts.
Right, so I'm just, I just want to be clear, because in the past, we would have just rolled it over to the new budget if we knew that it was going to be paid in the new budget.
Well, this one is a little more than just, um, rolling it over. This is also, uh, completing the agreement, uh, and, uh, changing the resolution to match accordingly.
The agreement to the funding.
The agreement to the funding and the contract.
Okay. Understood. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to renew the professional services contract with Strategic Counsel, P L C, for state legislative and advocacy services for fiscal years two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Sommo.
Second. Discussion? Um, Mister City Manager, could you give a summary of this item and then also clarify? There was a comment regarding this item earlier, um, by the public about this being an annual contract? Could you hit that point as well?
Mayor and Council, the, uh, there are several thousand bills that move through the California Legislature every session. This particular lobbying, uh, group has, um, extensive experience working with our representatives up in Sacramento. Lobbying is something that's commonplace in all municipalities and government, county governments, as well as federal agencies. Several examples of the ways at which Strategic Counsel has advocated on behalf of the city involve, um, working with multi-year efforts, uh, with California Government Operations Agencies for General Services to reach an agreement to, uh, give Compton the armory free of charge, which we have, uh, where our Sheriff's U Foundation is. Strategic Counsel also, um, helped, uh, the city secure, uh, opportunity to zone designations on six census tracts located here in the city. In addition, uh, the Strategic Counsel is assisting us in, um, analyzing and putting together our city's response to the state controller's findings. They, uh, a bid went out and they are also the lowest bidder. Um, and it is not, uh, the, the dollar amount of one hundred and eighty thousand is for a two-year period, not for, uh, one year. And their actual, um, bid came in at seventy-five hundred per month.
So that's actually a little less than before?
Yes.
And then, um, the, the one thing that I want to say about this is, no matter how connected or how good your lobbyist is, if you don't use them, then you don't benefit. And, and I just want to thank Mister Cecil Rabo, City Manager, for actually, uh, building a relationship with the, um, consultant to actually help with some of the issues that the city was facing. So thank you, Mister City Manager, for, um, creating a relationship.
Um, Madam?
Yes, ma'am.
In reading this, uh, the information here, I know there's an, in addition to an option to extend the term of the agreement for a period of one year, that would be for twenty twenty-one, would they come be back before the council? Prior to that, we have to prove it for twenty twenty-one, how would that work?
This, uh, so it's twenty eighteen nineteen, um, and twenty nineteen twenty. So that's the, this year and next year.
Yeah, so which means.
And so before, if we bring it back past that, yes, we'll have to come back.
We'll have to come back before the council.
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year service agreement with and establish a purchase order for Ron's Maintenance Incorporated for citywide catch basin cleaning services, six hundred forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Sommo.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On this particular contract, is it six hundred forty-one dollars a ye, six hundred forty, forty-one thousand dollars a year? Or is it six, for three years?
For three years, but I'll ask the city manager to give a summary of this item.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this item, uh, is brought before you as a result of, uh, the N P D E S or the, um, National Pollutant Discharge, uh, Requirements that the city has to adhere to. Uh, the flood, uh, catch basins where water goes off the street into our flood catch basins have to be cleaned out. We have seventeen hundred and eighty-two such catch basins. Um, sixteen hundred and eighty-three were retrofitted with, uh, new inserts. This particular contractor was the only bidder, uh, that responded, uh, to this particular R F P. And, uh, it is his job to clean all these catch basins. And, uh, his rate is at twenty dollars per catch basin, which is extremely reasonable. And it is a three-year, uh, agreement.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
So it looks like the total, uh, annually, it's two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're at item number nine. Okay, item number nine is being pulled, requested by the city manager. We're at council comments?
Yes, um, Councilman Galvane?
Yep. Well, I want to apologize for my tardiness at today's council meeting. Um, I was coming, uh, from work and there was a lot of traffic. I had the opportunity to attend the Independent Cities Association Conference, um, and it was a great opportunity to learn about new legislation that's taking place in the state and also a great, uh, opportunity to network with colleagues from other cities and learn how we can, uh, put our resources together for the betterment of the people. I want to request an item at a next council meeting to bring a, a resolution to, um, appoint a member to the I C A, uh, board. That I was told up there by the new president that nobody shows up to the meeting. So, um, I want to bring a resolution back next week to, uh, appoint someone to that because I believe it's important for the city of Compton to be at the table when we're talking about benefits and potentially money coming to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zarita?
Um, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just to start off, I did attend the I C A conference as well. And I think that's the only way you can grow and you can learn as a city and to network with people and other people that, um, are doing the same things that we are doing. And when one of the, um, citizens said that the city manager shouldn't attend, well, I, I beg to differ because at the end of the day, we are a city manager, Rand City. And we talked about, um, different issues. One in particular was about PERS and, uh, PEPA that the city manager and the council are going to have to be addressing in about the next twenty-four months. And the city manager, as well as the city controller, really needs to be abreast as to the changes that are coming and for payroll issues and, and all kind of different things that me, as a councilperson, I don't deal with. And we also talked about, um, Measure H, got an update on Measure H, which governs cannabis. And one of the other things that really, um, that I was really interested in and was glad to actually sit in a workshop on was the conference about the drones. And I really wish that our fire chief could have been there because, um, there's a lot of talk in the news now about drones. You can, you can purchase a drone for about twenty-five hundred dollars and you can get it up in about five minutes or less. And it can give you full access of a fire or entry to a fire, as well as with the fire, uh, the sheriff's department. And it's a lot cheaper than bringing in, uh, helicopter. But then you have a lot of issues that citizens talk about, invasion of privacy. And you really have to know how to govern and the laws to put into place when you're using drones. And, um, it was very informative. And I hope that we can really think about it and talk about it more extensively on how to actually get some employee training and city manager really actually start putting together some policies to use drones because it's, we really need to stay up with technology. And if you know how to use technology, it's a lot cheaper than legwork. So those are a few things that, um, really caught my attention at the workshop. And folks that work and have been supervisors and managers at their jobs, the only way you learn things is to go to conferences. So hopefully you all will trust us to go to these different conferences. And, um, Seabree Park Ribbon Cutting, this Saturday, it's coming, 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 coming. I'm so happy, I'm so excited. That's Saturday, the twenty-first, at nine A M. T-ball demonstration games, hot dogs, popcorn, backpack giveaways. Vision for Sight will be there. Compton Unified School District Enrollment Table will be set up. Compton College Booth, Food Bank, and et cetera. So come on out, it's a family event, it's going to start early. Hopefully we'll be out of there before it's too hot. And just very excited about the new park, um, the renovation that's been done. Long time overdue, eight, eight years overdue. And we have, also have restrooms there. So it's, um, it's very nice. I just want everybody to come out and see it. I'm not going to tell you everything that's there, because then you won't have to come. But I want you to come out and enjoy in the ribbon cutting of Seabree Park. And that's on Elsie Gondo and Compton Avenue. And then also, um, last week, I had the opportunity to, um, attend the groundbreaking of the U.S. Storage Facility that's on Elsie Gondo and Central. Um, it's about a half a block between Compton Avenue and, and Central. So it, it demolished a whole half a block of collapitated buildings, buildings that were made out of. made out of, I don't want to say a year because Mr. Irons is going to hold me to it, but I know it had to be fifty-plus years of old steel. So, very excited about that new state-of-the-art storage facility that's coming to Compton. And also, they will be doing the renovation of Parma Lee Park, that's on Parma Lee behind Centennial. So, very excited about that. And then, I talked to the City Manager about, well, first of all, let me talk about District One. So, District One, we're doing the demolition, we started yesterday, of the old bowling alley site, nineteen fifty North Central Avenue. We're going to be doing some development, but in the, in the meantime, between development and, between now and development, we wanted to demolish the building because it was just a homeless haven. It was just, it took many hours of manpower to maintain and to, many dollars, sending the sheriffs over to get the homeless out, making noise, stealing people's electricity, stealing the neighbors' water. So, we started demolition yesterday, and it actually got started a couple of days before the City Manager was able to get the notice out to the surrounding neighbors. So, that notice will be going out on Wednesday or Thursday of this week to just reassure the people that all testing had been done for asbestos and, and lead or anything else that needed to be tested for, and it was cleared by AQMD that the building could be demolished. So, very excited about the demolition of the building, and then there was just some neighbors that were a little afraid of the dust. But we, I want to just reassure you that everything has been tested and, and everything is, is safe over there. And you'll get a notice in the next couple of days to reassure that. And what I talked to the City Manager about was the old building on Alameda, which is the old trash site that you people have probably seen, that is burnt down a couple of times, but this last fire was very extensive. So, driving by there one day last week, I saw a lady maneuvering through the burnt pillars over there. So, I immediately called the City Manager and the Fire Chief to inform them that people are still in this building that's really a hazard now. So, I talked to the City Manager about maybe getting twenty-four-hour security at that facility until it could be demolished because I, I think it's really a liability now, and I think that just by the grace of God, nobody has been hurt in that building so far. That's on Alameda, the old trash site. I can't think of the address. What's the address, City Manager?
Eleven oh five.
Eleven oh five. So, let's, let's continue the discussion to get twenty-four-hour security over there. And then also, the Autism Swim Club is going very, very well. Just, it's very refreshing to go to Gonzalez Park to the swimming pool on Saturday mornings. And most mornings, if you go there, I'm in the pool with the family, families. And we have some families that have been there for five years, and, and the kids have grown up in the water and, and love the water and just can't get them out of the water. This season is already almost over and full to capacity. Want to thank the City Manager for having the lifeguards fully dressed and identified. I think that's one of the most important things of pool safety, is having lifeguards that are identified. And very happy, very happy to see our fifth annual Autism Swim Club. Our seventh annual, seven years, can you believe it? Seventh annual Compton Walk for a Cure will be this October thirteenth. It's always the second Saturday of the month, and it's at seven a.m. So, take note because we have a new location. New location, everybody. We've grown out of the old location, so we're moving over to Centennial High School. We'll be at Centennial High School, where the parking, we have much, much more parking. We've got a couple of parking lots over there. We have Elsie Gondo, we have Central, so we'll be at Centennial High School. And it's in the first district, so that makes it even better. So, that'd be October thirteenth, seven a.m., Centennial High School. And just to just touch real quick on, I know we have issues in Compton, but the issues in Compton just didn't hap- didn't just happen. And I'm actually going to ask maybe the City Controller to do an audit on the money that is spent on illegal dumping, or cleaning up trash that people just throw out, the alleys. I want to include alleyways, just the city, the city as a, in a whole, the money that's spent from staff hours, dumping hours, the whole thing. I want to do an audit on that. Because people, and, and when you, when you report trash, I would just suggest you take a picture of it because it took me almost a year and a half to realize that the staff was picking up the trash and it was new trash. I mean, there's, the alley, the Magnolia Alley, like I told my mother, we drove through there the other day, and I told my mother, I said, "We couldn't get through the alley." I said, "But Ma, this is every, twice a week that, that Magnolia Alley, Magnolia Alley needs to be cleaned." It's just, it's unfortunate that we have to spend that kind of money on cleaning an alley. But I, you know, in some of those, those buildings on, on the Magnolia Alley, I bet those businesses are putting some of that trash out, too. And I know that every end of the month, on the twenty-eighth and the thirtieth, the folks that are moving out of the apartment buildings, they just put their trash, their couches, their old mattresses, their clothes they don't want, everything they don't want just goes right in the alley. So, Madam City Controller, if we can do an audit on illegal dumping cleanup throughout the city. And just to kind of just, and I got two more minutes, Mayor, and I'll be done. Just to kind of give a brief synopsis for the things that are going on this, on in the city because I'm still proud to be a councilperson. And I think that being on the council for almost eight years, this is going on my eight year when I complete this in April, the projects that, that we tried to get started six years ago or seven years ago are just now really kicking off. And, and it's really, it's, I love driving down Central. I love the crosswalks, I love the striping. I just love Compton Boulevard, even though it's not even in the first district, but I love Compton Boulevard. I call the City Manager every time I drive down there, and I say, "When are those street signs moving to the first district?" Because I just love them. And just to see progress in the city, and we have right now a total eight point five million dollars, plus another four hundred thousand dollars for tree trimming. And just to tell you, two thousand seventeen, we spent one point three million on Wilmington. Two thousand sixteen, Central Phase One, one point six million. Central Phase Two, two thousand eighteen, one point seven million. Residential streets starting any day now in District One and District Two will be one point seven million. Compton Boulevard, six hundred thousand, December two thousand seventeen. Pot hole repair, citywide, eight hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars completed, seven hundred thousand, thousand dollars about to get started as we speak. Sidewalk, citywide, five hundred thousand dollars, starting now. Citywide striping, three hundred thousand dollars. So, I think that when you have an administration that can work together as a team, because team is how you win things, team, team makes a dream work. So, when you have a team of administrators that actually run the city and handle the city's business, I think you can, you can see progress. And then, best for last, I want to say thank you, this is beautiful, to the Latino Chamber of Commerce, Compton City Councilmember District One, on behalf of the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Compton, thank you for your support to our community, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. And no matter what anybody say, Judge Filey knows, you like to be recognized and congratulated sometimes for the work that you do. So, I want to say thank you for this. I will treasure it with the rest of my recognitions. And with that, Madam Mayor, I am done.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments. Mr. City Manager, I requested that the lot on Central and one hundred and fifty-six be cleaned, and I know that it's not our property, so I just want to know the status. Could you bring back an update on if we've noticed the owners? And also, the same thing for the lot on Tahada and Compton Boulevard. And I got a complaint, and I don't know, I forwarded it, but just in case you, they haven't gotten to it, the cul-de-sac at Visalia, there's a lot at the end of it, and they're, they're requesting, someone came out, but they didn't completely clean it, so could you please send them back to finish the job? And I am requesting that the bench in the Greenleaf Walk Park be painted, there's graffiti on it, so could you please remove the graffiti? And also, I just want to know the status of the, the lights in Raymond Street Park. I don't know if they've been replaced, but we received a complaint about no lighting in Raymond Street Park. Okay, could you?
So, regarding Raymond Street Park, I just spoke to General Services today about that particular item. We are, I've ordered them to replace all the lighting at the, the public restroom there. There are, I believe, eight lights or six lights in that particular restroom. We're going to undo the welding at the bathroom there, clean the restrooms out, and then repair all the broken lights that are in and around the field. There's also a breach in the fence along the west side of the park near the corner there that we're going to fix, and then also take care of the, the tagging on the apparatus in the playground area.
Thank you. And that's another thing, you know, we do constantly do that. I think I've requested that fence be repaired, I guess about ten times, and every time we repair it, even if, since I requested that the gate be open, they still cut the fence because they don't want to walk around to the gate. So, I don't know what we can do about that, but that's one of the, the problems that we face over there. And let's see, as far as the street light upgrade, when is that project going to start? You know, Mr. Hollyfield did mention Compton Boulevard and all of our major thoroughfares. We need to do something about the lighting, so I don't know where we are with that, but could you just, at some point, bring back, let us know, give us a report on it?
Okay, very briefly, we met with the pilot program last week, and we'll be, General Services will be bringing back the item for council to determine where we're going to do the pilots. I've left the, the contract or the agreement with every council member about a, maybe three weeks ago, month ago. And so, I wanted to go over those notes in detail with the developer. So, we'll be bringing an item back to you guys to determine where exactly you want to do the particular pilot program. And there'll be some, I'm sure there'll be some discussion about that.
My district, my district. Okay, thank you. And I just want to say that so far, I'm having a homeless outreach and wellness fair on Friday, July twentieth, from ten a.m. to one p.m. at Trag New Park, which is located at twenty-one twenty-one West Alondra Boulevard. We will have health screenings, mobile showers, entertainment refreshments. We'll have about fifteen, sixteen service providers that will be there to service the homeless, and we will have someone from the L.A. Public Defender's Office to actually help if there's any needs in that area. We're just going to have all kind of resources, and Volunteers of America will be transporting the homeless to and from the location. So, I look forward to it, just doing something to service the homeless that are in the area. And let's see, what else do I have going on? There's an organization, and I brought it to our attention last year, and they're doing it again, My Sisters Keeper, they're having an event on, where they collect items for the public, they collect items from the public to take back to Nigeria, and they're just asking you to fill up a tote bag. It's just for women. Some of the items are bars of soap, antiperspirant, things that we take for granted, that we get on a regular basis, they don't have access to it. So, they're going to be doing a collection project until August the twenty-fifth. And so, if you would like to donate, you can contact, there's a Dropbox, contact them for the Dropbox location, or they have a GoFundMe, or you can, they will actually come and pick it up. So, the, the young lady's phone number, I'm looking for it, it's not on here. I will bring it back next week for the phone number, and you can contact them to make a donation. I'm planning to put together a few bags and take out there. And then, lastly, I was out last week, I attended two conferences. I went to the NACO Conference, which is the National Association of County and City Health Officials, on behalf of the Mosquito Abatement District. The conference theme was unleashing the power of local public health. And the importance of me being involved is to know what to do in case there is a threat to public health. And as we know, there, with the Zika and the outbreaks of all the diseases that come with mosquitoes, we need to know what to do in case we have an outbreak. So, I attended the conference, they had some very good workshops. One workshop kind of caught my attention, it was, said something like for white people only, and so I went to the workshop. I went to the workshop, but what they were really talking about is what they can do in the public health field to identify with people of different color, to be more, to be, yeah, but I, I was the first one sitting in my seat on the front row, waiting to see, you know, what they're, what we were talking about. But it was really, really a good conference and a little workshop, and they just talked about how, you know, sometimes people can be insensitive when they're not faced with the same issues, so that's, that was where they were coming from. And it was a good workshop. And the overall conference was good. I went to all kind of conferences and who to contact, and, you know, made a lot of contacts and cards and all of that so that we will know what to do in case. We don't want a outbreak, and that's the importance of keeping that creek clean. And then, I did attend the Independent Cities Conference, and the title of the conference was Cities Leading the Future. And I also attended the workshop on drones and thought about, we need to come back with an ordinance to govern our drones. And the city that did the presentation, they said that they, they have training on there, but they don't offer. It's just a standard thing, it's no overtime or no certifications to go along with it. It's just so that, it's something that assists our public safety with, in an emergency situation. So, we do need to stay on top of being involved with technology. And then, I attended the workshop on our PERS and what we are going to be faced with in the next couple of years. And then, they have something, Emergency Operations Center, how the county and the energy services respond to emergencies, and again, knowing who to contact, what to do in case of an emergency. And we do have an Emergency Operations Center, but, you know, just so that we get additional contact, it was good to be there. And then, they had a, an event, a workshop on homeless update on, with the Measure H, and because I'm doing this outreach, I wanted to attend that. So, it was a really beneficial to attend, and I look forward to attending and bringing back information to the city each time that I go. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy, for the, and for me the summary as well on the conferences that you attended. Councilwoman Cherie?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I will be hosting the Quarterly Business Roundtable on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. at the Dollar High Community Center. This is an opportunity for you to network with local businesses, meet law enforcement and city staff. Our guest speakers are David Ford of the Southern California Edison, Cecil Magillian of GSR Corporation, and Deborah Watson-Triggs of State Farm. And I'm also hosting my third annual senior summer luau on Friday, July the twenty-seventh, at the Dollar High Community Center, from eleven to two. Come out and enjoy scrumptious catered meal and entertainment and lively music. For more information, please contact the staff at Dollar High Center, three one zero six oh five five six eight eight. That's three one zero six oh five five six eight eight. Mr. City Manager, could you please, I know there was a conversation took place today in regarding the eleven oh five South Alameda, could you please give an update to the community as to where... as to where we are in regards to this and what we're going to be doing?
Council, as you know, the week before we were to demolish that particular building, it caught fire and burned down completely to, to the ground. There was an asbestos assessment done on that building prior to that, there was some mitigation that had to take place before the demolition could occur. The fire disturbed that particular structure, and it is in the process of being reassessed. And then once we reassess that particular and see what it takes to abate the asbestos, which has now been disturbed and moved about, demolition will resume, and it will be done by the same company that is contracted to do, that's doing nineteen fifty right now. So I spoke to the General Services Manager today, as I think you spoke to him this morning also. So we anticipate bringing an item back so we can get the mitigation for the asbestos done before the, before we close out, and then we'll proceed with that. The demolition contract has already been secured, so we can do it right after that.
So should that item be on the agenda for next week, hopefully?
We're hoping that it'll be before the agenda next week, yes.
Okay, because I spoke with him, and he said that, you know, they was working, trying to get it together, so hopefully between them and the city attorney, I know he said he would work with them and try to make sure it's taking place.
Yes, he informed me that he and the city attorney have actually spoken on that, too.
Okay, thank you so much. And I, you know, today, a lot of people came before the council, and they talked about how dirty this city is. So I was, had the opportunity to speak to several of the residents there in Fourth District today, and it's not just Fourth District, it's pretty much throughout the city. But would you please provide us a monthly, weekly, monthly maintenance schedule for Public Works and Parks and Recreation, because when you're going down Atlantic, do we have anyone at all that's assigned to actually trying to maintain our main streets as far as trying to get, remove the trash and the debris that's there?
Yes, Public Works has divided the workforce into districts, and they have a regular maintenance schedule. We also will be putting out a, another RFP for contract cleaning. As you know, we used to have a contractor who was very, very responsive, who was called out on weekends and on holidays, so that particular contract will be going out, and hopefully we'll get someone equally responsive. I will tell you that cleaning illegally dumped garbage in the city is an ongoing, ever-present process, particularly in some of our more congested alleys. Some of the alleys become unpassable. The debris that happens on the streets, particularly large streets like Santa Fe or Alameda, some of it falls off trucks, some of it is blown by the weather and hits against the Alameda Corridor, and there's a, it's quite the stretch from border to border. A lot of the debris, particularly in the northern part of the city, as I've driven you and other council members around near the recycling centers, is almost indescribable. And it, and it range, it varies from a few thousand pounds to tons, literally, that we clean up each, each week.
The reason, the reason I'm having this discussion, because right there on Atlantic, starting at Alondra going to the, to the seventeen on the path, that is a very small strip there, and that's really the only area that belonged to the city of Compton on that street. And if you go there, I went there today, it is so much, it's a lot of trash, and I'm just wondering, do we have anyone that's, that's on a maintenance schedule to out, go out and just to clear those areas and everything, because it's a lot of trash there. I mean, I mean, I'm just wondering, is there any way we could have someone to maybe, do we have anyone that's assigned to trying to clean and pick up any trash there on these streets? Because even on Santa Fe, I'm dealing with a lot of the, the Santa Fe Alondra going south, that area is the same, you have a lot of trash there as well, and just in certain areas. It's not the whole street, but it's just certain areas, and there's a lot of baskets that's being left there, that where they've taken it from the stores and everything. I did report it, and I'm just wondering if we would have, would anyone be going out to pick those up and clean those areas?
Yes, we have people that are on schedule. However, we don't have enough people to say, we're going to hit Alameda every day. And some of the debris that you see out there, that I've seen out there, are entire couches or entire tables, chairs, even the baskets, it requires staff to actually have more than one person to actually lift this stuff up. In many cases, we have to use front loaders and heavy equipment to, to lift it. So the smaller debris that we see, the couches, the chairs, you know, you could pass any particular neighborhood and see, you know, what appears to be some living room furniture laid out, but one person simply can't, can't do it. But we do have staff out there responding. Generally, the staff responds to the large stuff in at least groups of two or three. This morning, I sent you pictures of where we cleaned in one particular alley. We had to use a front loader and four staff members and a dump truck just to pick up the debris.
Well, first, I want to thank you for that, because it took a while to get that done, so I want to thank you and staff for getting that taken, getting that done today. So I do appreciate it. That was quite a while trying to get that taken care of. Also, the street sweepers are not able to sweep on Atlantic Drive in Carwell, because cars are parked in the red zone and are not being ticketed. That's another issue there. Do we have any, the people that's ticketing, do they actually trail the, the street sweepers? How is that done?
They have to, they have to lead the street sweeper, they can't trail the street sweeper.
They have to be in front?
Yes.
Okay, are they there at all, because it doesn't appear, because with the, with the cars there, there's any tickets being given out?
There is supposed to be someone assigned there unless we have a sick call-in. We are in the process of hiring more parking enforcement officers, and then we also conducted a very large parking enforcement operation this past weekend, in which I sent you guys the report.
Yes, we did. But this is something that's been ongoing, so. And also, there is a, there is a Republic Service trash bin that has not been emptied for the past two weeks, and is located behind twenty-seven sixteen East Alondra Boulevard. Trash is all over in the parkways and alley, and so we really need to have someone go over there and clean that up, because I thought the Republic would pick up that bin, but it's, it's been there for two weeks now. And also, the air conditioner is not working at Kelly Park, and I would like to know if we can check to make sure all of the air conditioners in our parks are working because, working because when it, when it gets really hot, that can be used as a cooling spot for our seniors and also for our youth that's there as well. So I would like for you to check and make sure that those air conditioners are working, but I do know that one in Kelly Park is not working.
The air conditioning unit at Kelly Park has been reported to General Services, and they are in the process of securing a bid for that.
Okay, thank you. And also, could you give me an update? I noticed, a notice to the public for the First Time Home Bys Program, and we were supposed to start back on June first, and people are asking about it, could you tell me, give me an update on that as well?
I'll bring that back to you guys next week.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
I also wanted to tell Natino Chamber, thank you very much for the plat, I really appreciate it.
Oh, same here, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you as well, always appreciate it, and it's exciting to see the fresh start that is happening there with great leadership and with the older generation and the younger generation working together, so we're expecting great things. I will be as brief as possible. First, last night, we had the Keep It Colorful Conference with Erica Alexander, she's also known as Maxine, from the hit sitcom in the nineties, Living Single, and she and her team packed out the Dollar High Community Center last night with over six hundred creatives from the city of Compton for their Keep It Colorful Conference, where she discussed the importance of building the village and equipping ourselves with the tools needed to be successful in the industry. Thank you to Seed and Spark for such an informative presentation on crowdfunding, and you can follow her company at Color Farm on any social media platform, and to stay up to date on her amazing and free initiative, which is targeted toward people of color. July ninth, Tomorrow Aeronautical Museum celebrated the official grand opening of the DC Three gourmet food truck at the Compton Airport. This food truck was once a DC Three cargo airplane that flew combat in World War Two. It's a hidden gem in the city and the perfect place to grab lunch while getting a first-class view of the airport's runway. And just a big congratulations to Robin and the entire Tomorrow Aeronautical Museum team. It really takes the village, and they have grown significantly, I can say, over all the years, but they really have hit a great stride over the last couple of years, and they're doing really great things at the airport. So please go out and get a first-class meal at the DC Three, and you will be pleasantly surprised, I'm sure. Just on some follow-up items, I'm requesting a status update for the Measure P expenditure report and project report. I know that we are working on complying with our objectives of having the spending reports available online for the public, so I just want to ensure that we're on track for our goal of having the, number one, the five-year plan for the first week in September, and then also that we are categorizing all of the expenditures from the inception or receipt of initial Measure P funds to date.
Yes, we are, and the Public Works Director as well as the Controller of that.
Thank you very much, Madam City Controller and Public Works Director, for your hard work. I look forward to seeing that report. Also, requesting a code enforcement action plan. I know that we are in transition and currently recruiting for a new department head for that position, but all of the issues, well, the majority of the issues we discussed on tonight are really code enforcement related, when we talk about quality of life issues with illegal dumping, even some of the homeless parking issues, and we really need to have a realistic plan for how we're going to address our city's longstanding issues. And if we don't get aggressive with mitigating these issues, then I, my fears that we'll fall so far behind that we'll just be overtaken by some of the standard issues that we've seen, especially with the increase of homelessness throughout the entire region, and we're experiencing that in the city of Compton as well. And so I know currently we have six code enforcement officers. We've said this many times and discussed it publicly, that that is not sufficient to canvas a ten-square-mile city, so I'd like for city management to come forward with a feasible plan that can address our city's issues and actually canvas the area and ensure that we're protecting the quality of life for our residents. It's unacceptable, and it's really quite unfair for people to pay property taxes like clockwork and not to receive a basic level of service. And so as a resident, as a property owner, even as the mayor, I'm just, I'm not satisfied with where we are with code enforcement, and we need to see what the realistic action plan will be to increase the level of service for our residents. Also, city departments, we've requested for departments to report their activity via the city's website. I've requested before and after photos of issues like illegal dumping, and I know that city management and also specifically Public Works have done a great job with providing those to us, but I think that information should also be shared publicly. And so as we, I know you're bringing forward the Clean Compton Initiative for the city's review and consideration, but having a visual place where people can see their progress is also important, because if there isn't perception that the city is not doing anything toward these issues, then the issues will continue to persist, and it's something that has to have community buy-in as well. And then I think we also need to really target our strategy for code enforcement, because I think Councilwoman Sharie had mentioned earlier, that when certain apartment buildings at the first of the month, when they're, have incoming new tenants, and some apartment buildings rotate more often than others, people are just continuing to dump their trash, and it's a regular occurrence, and those people should be cited. So we need to really figure out what the robust action plan will be and get these property owners and business owners held accountable for the issues that are going on under their watch as well, because it's impossible for any city to police or to oversee a hundred thousand residents and to pick up every single piece of trash that people throw down. That's not realistic, and it's not going to happen, so we have to address the causal factors, which is really working to curb the activity at the community level, and that includes our stakeholders as well. Lastly, I'd like to report on all open city work orders that are pending in our system. We all follow up on outstanding constituent matters where people are completing their work orders. Some of them have two and three, or sometimes four work orders for the same issue over time, and we need to have a report of where we are with addressing the work orders, so that we can have a realistic goal of how we're going to operate the city. Because there's one issue where sometimes staff will kind of lobby or really purport that they can address the service levels, but if we have work orders that are open for two and three years, then we need to figure out what's the best way to provide service for our residents. And so I want to make sure that our staff has the tools that they need to complete these work orders and that we can do it in a timely manner. So is it possible to get a report to the council by the thirty-first of this month?
For the work orders, I can try to get that to you. I started looking at that, and quite honestly, some of the work orders date back several years to twenty fifteen. I'm not saying that they're all open, I will just say that they could not determine, like a trash pickup work order may have been fulfilled, but it didn't get inputted as it was done at, as completed. But trees, things like that, there, there are work orders that are open, have been open for a number of years. So I will bring back by the thirty-first as, as many of the work orders that we can and by category, and then we'll look at a plan. Really what we're trying to do is take a look at the ones that are open, what the status is, if they were ever addressed, and then close them out appropriately, and then take a look at if it's a repeat order, and really sort out where we are with these things, because they, there are a number, literally thousands, that have been open for a long time.
Right, and I just think we really need to get a hold of it, because what happens is you all are faced with responding to the council when we have urgent requests, and then we have to prioritize which issues are public safety hazards and the like, so I'd like to be able to get that report, and at least, even if it's a raw report, you know, we can work to refine it and get a real actual number per category, as you said. Thank you. Lastly, for just a couple, save the dates, we have our Compton Open Mic Night, one-year anniversary Thursday, July twenty-eight, excuse me, twenty-six, starting at eight p.m. at the Dollar High Community Center. We also have a community youth workshop on human trafficking, sex trafficking, and this, and sex exploitation of youth and the dangers of that on July twenty-fourth at six thirty p.m. And the location is the Shine Youth Center, and they are located at seven hundred West Compton Boulevard. And we have our summer campfire hosted by the Comptons, excuse me, hosted by the Community Nature Connection, August fourth and September first, from six to eight p.m. at the Compton Creek Natural Park, and that address is nine four one West Cressy Street in Compton. And then, of course, it's free to the public. And I'll table this for next week. All right, may we have a motion to recess?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Sharie?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, thank you.
Maybe have a motion to resume closed session for us?
Second.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We have completed our closed session discussions for this evening. The first two was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Davis versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC 648983. And Ramsey versus City of Compton, LASC case number BC 641681. No reportable action taken. The entire council was present in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9A. Third item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. One potential case discussed pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9B. No reportable action taken in that matter as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. May we have a motion to adjourn?
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make one announcement if you don't mind. I would like to close in memory of Mary Ann O'Neal. She's a previous city councilperson for the City of Carson. Ms. Neal died. Yes, she did. And I meant to do that earlier, so yeah, I just wanted to let the community know. At this time, Mary Ann O'Neal.
O'Neal.
O'Neal. O-N-E-A-L. Uh, and, uh, as soon as the services are given to me, is when, time the services are given, I will make sure that I present it to the council.
Thank you for sharing that. And we will now adjourn in memory of the Honorable Mary Ann O'Neal, who served on the City Council for the City of Carson.
Counselperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.